Good evening. We will open this Thursday, October 5th, 2020 County Commission Session at 6:01 PM. Commissioner Hudson, would you recite the Pledge of Allegiance for all of us?
Sure, Will.
Thanks.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to approval of the minutes for October 1st.
I move.
Second.
I would like to... I know it was very confusing when we did the motions and amendments and discussion, but I don't think the minutes quite reflect what we did. So I'm referring to page eight of the minutes under item number 10. It said, "Motion by Commissioner Nolan to approve file ZTA as presented and to include an increase on the setbacks. Motion passed by a three to two vote." I think it would be more accurate to say that motion by Commissioner Hudson to approve files ZTA as presented, and then make that a period, and then Commissioner Nolan moved to amend the motion to include doubling the setback requirements. Amendment to the main motion was seconded and unanimously approved. And then go, "The main motion passed by a three-two vote." Is that more... Did I get that right, or is that more... How do you all feel about?
I agree with Commissioner Tab on this.
Okay.
Yeah, I do too. That's how it happened.
Right. And, you know, I messed up with not making it an amendment, and it was confusing, so I can understand how staff just put it down that way. Okay, we're all good.
Setbacks were unanimous. The other... The motion... Main motion was three to two. Correct.
Right.
And I think you're correct. Commissioner Hudson did make the initial motion.
Right. So we all agree to approve the minutes with the noted addition or correction?
Yes.
Everybody? Okay.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of requisitions.
I move that we approve requisitions in the amount of $11,900.
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion? Motion is to approve requisitions for October 15th, 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving down to accounts payable, October 8th, 2020.
I move we approve accounts payable for October 8th, 2020, in the amount of $48,994.90.
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor of approving accounts payable for October 8th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I might have missed it, but I don't think we have October 15th accounts payable.
We do not. We do not have October 15th accounts payable or October 16th manual checks. We did not receive them from finance this week, so we'll have to approve them at the next meeting on October 29th.
Okay, that's fine. So I'll move down to manual checks for October 9th, 2020.
I'll move to...
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ralph.
Well, I was going to move to approve manual checks for October 9th, 2020, in the amount of $19,945.
Second.
Okay. The motion before us is approve manual checks for October 9th, 2020. Any questions or discussion? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Administrator, do we have any announcements or changes?
We don't have any changes to the agenda.
Okay.
Madam Commissioner, this is not a request for change, but I did get a request from Steve Allen, and I know we're about to put on the next agenda, but he wanted a temporary approval to be able to hold the... The equipment for the Red Cross. They're evidently moving to Hagerstown, but they're going to leave their equipment in Jefferson County. It just came up. They're leaving like next Thursday or something like that, but they're leaving the van and all the equipment, and he wanted some authority to be able to hold on to it without being in trouble.
Stephanie, could you work through that issue with him? Unless somebody has objections.
No, I don't know what's going on, so I don't... I'm not going to object to it.
I'm not quite sure either, so...
This came up at the 2:00 meeting today.
Okay.
Yeah. I thought we were going to put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Good idea.
I think that's fine, but he just wanted a little... He's going to be holding on to it until then.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. All right. We will move on to public comment. Who do we have? Stephanie?
Okay, so we have one... Someone who submitted comment in advance, and then we do have nine attendees this evening. If there is anyone who is interested in making public comment, you can use the Raise Your Hands function. There's a little hand, and you just click on that, or you can send me a message, and I will allow you to make... I'll unmute you so you can make public comments. So either way, either send me a message or use the Raise Your Hand icon, and I will unmute you. And while we're waiting to see if anyone wants to make public comment, I will go ahead and read the comment that we received in advance of the meeting. This is from Mr. David Tab. "I, David Tab, a lifelong resident slash taxpayer, protest the Jefferson County Commission hindering residents slash taxpayers from the reported public comment. It is time to reopen the meetings to the public comment or stop making decisions that affect the resident slash taxpayer of this county, such as appointments, purchases, projects, new and old, permits, studies, or any nonessential approvals and/or actions. It appears the JCC and the Jefferson County Administrator have yet to release the FIOA of the 12 proposals slash bids connected to the proposed courthouse complex. It appears the JCC has failed to set properly for the approval of minutes since March 17, 2020. If the JCC was not setting properly to approve the minutes, then the commission was not proper to hold a meeting. The approval of manual checks is just wrong. If you have a budget, just stick to it. How are you going to approve manual checks for October 16th, 2020, when you haven't listed what it's for?" Public comment. Between the agenda and the minutes was two pages insert regarding a requisition for approval for the holding cell door and the amount of $11,900. Were there any other bids? Presentation number three, Kelly Franklin, Jefferson Day Report. "It appears that Judge Hammer has made a personal request to the county commissioners to assist the court with a requirement of evaluations to be done by the Jefferson Day Report instead of the court doing their job. If the court and the circuit clerk have ignored a certain individual submitting their required respond to an ongoing case required by law, this process is no different than the information required from the Jefferson Day Report. The only difference is the certain individual is paying tens of thousands to the county and state in taxes in the Jefferson Day Report in consuming the tax dollars. I guess we will find out from the Judicial Investigation Commission how that works." Presentation number six. "Nathan Cochran, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. Doesn't look... This list has changed much. Why is that? Is it because you haven't figured out how to put sanctions on everyone else?" "County Administrator Report. Discuss requests for COVID-19 pandemic block grant $100,000. The COVID-19 pandemic block grant spreadsheet is $66,997.69. The question is, how can you request $100,000 grant when you haven't... when you only have a $66,000 request? Is this where you hope to get the extra money for manual checks? The public reserves the right to call out the public officials to follow the required laws to ensure the constitutional rights of the public. The government's order to stay at home to prime the public of notice and comments without reimbursement provisions. This is affecting every resident and business owner to be responsible for all loses, including the government. It's hard to be safe with the current county commission at this time. Have a nice day."
Okay.
And I have not... I don't see any takers for public comment. Nope. And no one raised their hand, and we've had no one message me, so it's not a public comment.
Well, I think we can be lenient if somebody does, you know, unless we're in the middle of a discussion, if somebody says they had trouble getting on and wanted to do public comment.
If I get a message or I see someone raise their hand, I'll wait.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we're really ahead of schedule, which is not a problem for me, but the next item on the agenda is the sheriff. Does he happen to be online?
Yes, I think Chief Deputy Fletcher is appearing for him this evening, and I know that she is...
Yes, ma'am. This is Fletcher. How are y'all doing this evening? I wanted to... I guess the... We have the Records Management and Preservation Board Grant on the agenda. That grant is to purchase and install a mobile filing system. The total cost for that would be $20,296.93. We are requesting $15,000 within the grant and have the additional resources available to cover the rest of the cost within our current funding. Our submission, it was learned that engineering had also decided to submit an application in discussions with them that sheriff has had, and in consideration of the fact that they were unable to present their application today as well, it was mutually agreed that our project would take the first priority and their scanning project would take the second priority. So we are both submitting our applications to you with that ranking showing on the certification form, which I believe you should have a copy of. And also, he wanted me to make a statement that, I guess it would be Ms. Tab would have to sign in both of the priority boxes, just so you're aware, and we're not missing signatures.
Okay.
And due to the deadline, that's why we went ahead and went with this meeting instead of the next, just because we have to provide 13 copies and postmark by the first of the month, so we just want to stay ahead of it.
Okay. I just want to be clear that it says the county match is $5,296.93, and I think from your comments, you're saying the sheriff has that in his budget to cover?
Yes, ma'am. Corey, he would have the additional resources to cover the costs within our current funding now.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and this is... This is Patsy. Yeah, I just have a... I mean, I think these are great projects. I know... But I think this is why we run into a bit of a problem sometime, because a left hand doesn't always know what the right hand is doing, and we're competing for the same funding at many levels, and I think... I really think that needs to be addressed. I mean, I think, you know, these are great opportunities for folks to be able to apply for these grant funds, and goodness knows, you know, storage is always a problem with files and record keeping, so... But I think at some point, that does need to be addressed, but so that everyone isn't... Or, you know, more than one office isn't applying for the same pot of money, so... But I will move... I'll move to approve the Record Management Board and Preservation Board Grant Application, the amount of $15,000, and authorize the president to affix her signature to the necessary documents.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion before us. Do we have any more questions or discussion?
I do have a question for Fletcher. And it's a administrative-type question. I guess my question, Fletcher, is what does this replace? If it replaces something, how long was that in existence, and how long will this system last? At least an estimate. I mean, is it a five-year system or two-year system, or...
Commissioner Lawrence, just so you know, that right now, our filing system has been stored, especially with a lot of the paper files that we have to keep on file for forever, it seems like. We've had a lot of these and basically stored in boxes and then marked with the year, and they just keep piling up, and we've even taken up some space that we had in the magistrate court building downstairs in the basement area, and also in our office. We have almost a full room full of stuff that we're trying to seep through, but we still have to keep on file. This system would allow us to be able to put this into the back area where we did have some additional space, and a lot, if not all of our files, can be stored in there, and should last us for at least, I would say, for five, probably 10 years, to be honest, because a lot of our paper files are now stored within our CAD system in the cloud, per se, so we wouldn't have as much paper filing to do in the future.
And I assume this is a going-forward system, that you're not going to go back and xeropt every... or refile everything from the past, I assume?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Any other questions or comments? The motion is to approve the Records Management and Preservation Board Grant Application in the amount of $15,000. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fletcher, the second item is the Sheriff Office Staffing, and I don't see any information on that.
Yes, ma'am. Just... I thank you for what he was advising me. We just want you to be aware, there are some changes that could possibly be coming to the Bolivar Agreement.
Oh, that's right.
They're looking at adding an additional... And funding an additional person in that area, and also with BCI, with our Drug Task Force, they are also looking to fund an additional person that would be assisting with that unit. And as you are aware, that handles the three counties within the... Three or four counties in the Eastern Panhandle. Also, just on top of the BCI, Sheriff, they want me to mention that we were part of the 22-people roundup that was indicted through the Department of Justice. 22 people were federally indicted during grand jury for some drug charges. A lot of drugs were actually picked up, and what they distributed throughout the basically my state area, through Pennsylvania, Maryland, West Virginia, and other locations. 400 grams of fentanyl was distributed throughout this, and they also obtained quite a large amount, and on top of cash as well, so we just want to pass that along. That is a vital part to making things like that happen within our area. So it was kind of a big deal. I think they put out a statement on that earlier in the week.
Oh, thank you for that information. Now, I'm... I was not sure what the acronym you used, what that means. I think you said BCI?
Yeah. There are criminal investigations, and they're also... They handle the... It's all part of the Drug Task Force.
Okay.
And handle... Yes, ma'am. So that's kind of the... A large portion of that... Their investigations involve drug work.
Right. Right. Well, I appreciate all the efforts, and hopefully this will make a dent.
Yes, ma'am.
Hopefully a significant dent in the local drug trade.
Yes, ma'am. We hope so too, but as we're all aware, once we get some off the street, it just... They back-filtered some others, so... But it was a good bust on our end.
Okay. All right. Anything else you need to share with us tonight?
Well, I'll say one more thing relating to grants. We were made aware that we did... We were awarded funds through the Court Security Grant. We have not been notified of the official award, and do not know how much, but we did... We are going to receive funds through that grant, hopefully in the near future.
All right. Sounds awesome. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Is... Next item is Michelle. Is she online, or is there something else we can...
Yes, she is online.
Okay. Hi, Michelle.
Hello. All right. So I have the fiscal year 20 financial information to present to you. I emailed this to you yesterday. The first handout that I'd like to go over would be the vendor listing for fiscal year 20. That's total to 24.1 million in accounts payable payments, and then 7.1 million in payroll, for a total of $31.2 million in accounts payable and payroll distributions. Did anybody have any questions about any of those vendors appearing on that list?
Michelle, this is Josh. Just one quick question. There was a... Like a car shop or a car dealership, maybe, for like $130,000. I assume that may be purchasing vehicles?
We did purchase vehicles out of the Capital Outlay Fund for the Sheriff's Department, so I would assume that it was for that without the vendor name.
I think... I'm trying to find it. It was like $130,000, I think. You can go on. I'll find it as you...
Okay. Any other questions about the vendor payment listing?
I was sharing.
For me?
Oh, I had the financial statement, not the vendor list, so I just wanted them to know that if they're seeing my screen, it's the financial.
Okay, so we'll look at the fiscal year 20 financial statements, and I like to start from the back and move forward. So we're going to actually go to the last page, because that's how the kind of are built. So the second to last page, Statement of Revenues and Expenditures. I'll go one page before that, Stephanie. There we go. This page shows all of the revenues and expenditures received for fiscal year 20 for all of the funds that are located or that the county has. So it's total governmental fund. I'll start with the general fund. Total added farm taxes for fiscal year 20 were $14.6 million, and that's up from $14.1 million in fiscal year 19. That's a normal increase for us. It's normally increasing about $500,000 a year. Alcoholic beverage taxes was $255,000 compared to $43,000 the prior fiscal year, so that was really the surprise for us to receive revenue. Hotel occupancy taxes is a tax dedicated solely to the Visitors Bureau and Parks and Rec Arts and Humanities and our Historic Landmarks Commission. For fiscal year 20, total revenue was $638,000 compared to $71,000 the prior fiscal year. That revenue is the... Other taxes of $1.1 million that is primarily made up of property transfer tax. That number did increase from $893,000 the prior fiscal year to $1.1 million during the current fiscal year. That really is a reflection of properties that are being transferred and showing that the housing industry has kind of picked up and properties are transferring more than they were in the prior fiscal year. Licenses and permits... Yes?
Good question. Is that also a result of the increase in the rate?
No, the rate increased the prior fiscal year, so that $893,000 would have included the increase in the rate already, so it's primarily an increase of... Okay. Licenses and permits of $412,000 is an increase over $329,000 the prior fiscal year. It's also trending the current fiscal year to be higher than it was in the current fiscal year. Intergovernmental revenues, we received about $2.7 million in federal income. The majority of that was from our CARES Act, federal grant revenue that we received fiscal year 19 of $2.2 million. The rest of that is made up of our VOCA grant for Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Department of Justice, Governor's Highway Safety Program, and other federal grants that the Sheriff's Office receives. The local grant of $50,000 is money that we received from the Board of Education for the School Resources Officer. They actually contributed, I believe, $30,000 in last fiscal year, and $20,000 of that was from the prior fiscal year. They just paid it late.
Okay.
Charges for services are $4.4 million, and that's an increase of about $1 million over $3.6 million the prior fiscal year. Total revenues for the general fund were $27.7 million, and that's an increase of about $3.2 million over the prior fiscal year, which was $24.5 million. For the other funds that are listed there, impact fees, we received about $1.5 million, $1.6 million in licenses and permits. That revenue is dedicated solely to schools, parks and rec, law enforcement, and a little bit of it is dedicated to ESA. The majority of that money actually goes to schools.
Yeah.
And our other non-governmental... Other non-major governmental funds, charges for services of $1.1 million. That includes our ambulance fee billing, and it's an increase over the prior fiscal of about $30,000, so it's pretty flat. Fines and forfeitures of $399,000. That's primarily revenue related to our general school reimbursement. And then the reimbursements... I'm sorry, the reimbursements of $648,000. That's primarily money that is given to the Assessor's Valuation Fund out of real estate tax revenue. That's her percentage that she receives, and that is primarily what that number is made of. So total revenues for all governmental funds was $33 million for fiscal year 20. Now, in the expenditure category, for the financial statements that we present, they're kind of lumped into expenditure type. So we have general government, public safety, health and sanitation, culture and recreation, and social services. For general government, we had $13.1 million in total governmental funds expenditures, and that makes up 47% of total expenditures for the fiscal year. Public safety, that includes our law enforcement, our 911 center, contributions that we make to ESA, contributions that we make to the fire departments. That totaled $12.8 million for last fiscal, and that makes up 46% of our total expenditures. Culture and recreation is primarily made up of the hotel occupancy tax distributions that is a dedicated revenue source. So total expenditures for the general fund were $24.3 million at the end of fiscal year 20, and for all governmental funds, it was $27.6 million. The next section would be our other financing sources and uses. We had transfers out of the general fund of $600,000, and that was all to the Capital Outlay Fund. Now, I just want to remind you that our budget was actually like 1.6 or 1.7 or 1.8 million. It did not make all of those contributions because we were faced with the COVID pandemic and wanted to make sure that we had money in reserves in case something happened, in addition to the loss of revenue that we actually did receive. Transfers in of $911,000. The assessor does contribute $522,000 back to the general fund to pay for salaries and benefits for approximately six or seven of her employees, so that money is transferred out of the Assessor's Valuation back into the general fund.
Okay. Okay.
At the end of the fiscal year, our total fund balance for the general fund was 9.9 million. For all governmental funds, it was 21.2 million. Total operating expenditures as a percent of fund balance. So total operating expenditures are 24.3 million for the general fund. If we divide that by the ending fund balance of 9.9 million, total operating expenditures as a percent of fund balance are 40% or 4.8 months of operating. That's primarily a result of the 2.2 million in unexpected revenue received from the CARES Act as well as the fact that I did not transfer out all of our monies to the capital outlay fund from the prior fiscal year. So I'll be bringing a budget revision to you in the, in the coming weeks to bring us back into compliance with our financial policy of having about 20% instead of 40%. And our financial policy also requires that we transfer that money to our capital outlay fund since it is fund balance from the prior fiscal year. I'll probably wait until after we get past the COVID crisis. I'll probably do that closer to the end of the fiscal year. I don't, I don't want to leave us in a bad position because it's harder to get money out of the capital outlay fund than it is to, you know, make a one-time use. So if we have an emergency. Any questions about the statement of revenues and expenditures? The page after that, the page before that are just, are pages that I use to create accrual entries to bring us to the first couple of pages. So I'm going to take you now to, it's labeled page number 19. So it's two pages before that. It's our balance sheet for all governmental funds.
Michelle, I did have a question. I know you said you're waiting to the end of the year because of COVID. Do we have any idea how long the current monies from COVID to the state are going to keep coming? Is it another month or two?
As far as I know, that grant expires on 12/31. I have not heard any from.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So on the balance sheet side, general fund had cash balances of 9 million compared to 4.9 million the prior fiscal year. And that's totally a result of my not transferring out monies to the capital outlay fund of 1.1 million. Accounts receivable were 171,000 compared to 530,000 the prior fiscal year. Now, our ambulance fee receivable is under the other non-major governmental funds revenue. 409,000, that's primarily our ambulance fee revenue right there, receivables. That has a slight increase and it's been increasing slightly every year compared to 385,000 in the prior fiscal year. We have a due to, due from other governments of 2.9 million and that's relating to CARES Act revenue that we had applied for and were approved for, for March, April, May, and June, but we did not receive until the current fiscal year. So that's what that receivable is primarily. Just the cash and the impact fees of 5.3 million. That's an increase over 3.7 million the prior fiscal year and the majority of that is reserved for schools. Any questions about any of the assets?
No.
Liabilities, I didn't see anything unusual happening in our liabilities. I just wanted to let you know that our total liabilities for the general fund are down from the prior fiscal year of 794,000 to 608,000 for the current fiscal year. And it shows at the bottom that our total fund balances at the end of the fiscal year are 9.9 million and it's compared to our prior year fund balance of 6.3 million. So now I want to take you to the first page. The first page. So that, that last sheet and the, and the sheet kind of there in the middle that are my adjusting accrual entries or my reconciliations entries that take you from the financial statements as we have them into how they're supposed to be presented so that we're in compliance with GAAP. To be in compliance with GAAP, we need to make sure that all of our assets are recorded and that all of our liabilities are recorded. So I'm just going to take you down through the primary governmental activities and this is summary of all of our governmental funds. So all of our governmental funds, we have 12.4 million in cash compared to 10.1 million in cash the prior fiscal year. We've already gone over accounts receivable and taxes receivable. The capital asset section is new. It's not something that you, you saw on the other balance sheets. The county has 35.6 million in capital assets. That includes all of our buildings, our land, our structures, any improvements to the land, vehicles, machinery, and equipment. We have accumulated depreciation of 17.5 million and we have a net value of our capital assets of 18.1 million. And I just wanted to point out that in the, in fiscal year 20, the sheriff's department did add five vehicles at a cost of 297,000. And we did have IT upgrades of about 118,000. In addition to those five new vehicles purchased for the sheriff's department, there was one vehicle that was totaled. So we did disclose that one vehicle.
Hey, Michelle, a quick question for you. Do you have like a fixed asset schedule that separates all those singular and shows which ones are fully depreciated, et cetera?
I do. And that's normally something that I present to the auditors. However, if you would like a copy, I can send it to you.
I'd just be curious. Yeah, I mean, no rush.
I can send that to you.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Our deferred outflows primarily relate to our net pension liability and our other post-employment liability. What deferred outflows are, they, they kind of show, it's something that we're required to do for GAAP. And they show that from time to time in businesses that there is a consumption of net assets by a government that is applicable to a future reporting period. And so that's why it's called a deferred outflow. And by the same token, deferred inflows at the bottom are an acquisition of net assets by governments that are applicable to a future period. They primarily, you know, they primarily are, are part of our net pension liability and our OPEB liability. Now, our liabilities, we've already kind of gone over what our, our current liabilities are, some things that are on here that were not on here, that weren't here. On the other financial statements include our net OPEB liability or other post-employment benefits. We do have approximately 20 employees who are grandfathered in to receiving health insurance after they retire. And that number is actually a declining number because as employees retire that and, or, or pass away, that number will decrease. So it was 1.7 million last fiscal year. It's a little over 1.7 million. It's just under 1.7 this current fiscal year. That number will continue to decline. It's not going to increase for us. Our net pension liability relates to retirement benefits for all of our employees in both the public employees retirement system and the deputy sheriff's retirement system. That number fluctuates wildly every year and it really very much depends on the interest rate, on the invest, and the investment earnings that the pension plan actually receives. So for the current fiscal year, our net pension liability is 1.85 million and that increased last year's 1.2 million. It has actually been as high as 6.2 million. So it really, it just changes every year and it's really based on those assumptions and interest rates. Our compensated absences pay relates to the monies that the county would owe to all employees for vacation and compensatory income and any other that is payable upon separation. It typically runs around $750,000, but because of the COVID pandemic, we did extend that leave cut from 630 to 1231. So it's a little higher this fiscal year than it normally would be at 923,000. I do expect that to go back down next fiscal year as employees are able to start taking leave. And we actually do enforce that, that cap that we have every year at the end of the fiscal year. I also include the component units information on the, both this first sheet and the second sheet. Now, the second sheet is just their income statement. And really the only differences between this income statement and the income statement that we went over earlier were the accrual entries for fixed assets, the net pension liability, other post-employment benefits, and compensated absences that we talked about on the balance sheet. And that's pretty much it with the financial statements. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Michelle?
Nope, none for me. Thanks, Michelle.
Oh, sorry, Patty. I said, I, I. I'll go last, guys.
I, I'm just going to be done here and, and I'm going to ask, what does GAAP mean?
GAAP is governmental, generally accepted accounting principles.
That's it.
Yeah.
I thought it might be something like that, but my father was an auditor and I used his books to hold up the goldfish bowl. That's all I did.
Okay, Josh, you have?
Basically what GAAP does is says that for the most part, most businesses, most companies, most governments are on, on the cash basis. But sometimes you're paying things in advance or sometimes you have accounts payable that are that you may not have paid yet. So GAAP says that you have to put the expenditure or the revenue in the period that it actually belongs. So that's what GAAP pretty much does in a nutshell.
Thank you.
And the financial statements were submitted to the auditor and they've also been sent to the newspaper for publishing so that we're in compliance with state code.
Okay. Josh, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just going back to the accounts payable, my, it was Stevens Auto Center on page seven for 147,380.
That would be the sheriff's department vehicles that we purchased.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks a lot.
Now, in addition to that, he typically purchases the light bars and license plate readers and notebooks and things like that. So that's not the only amount that's applicable to the vehicles that he purchases. He does have additional amounts through some of the other vendors to, to outfit them and make sure that they're proper.
Are we always, I mean, I haven't seen this specific vendor before. Are we always using this Stevens Auto Center for sheriff vehicles? Or it's just one time this, this year? Or do you know?
It's, it's different every year and other departments use different vendors as well. It's not always Stevens, but many times it is. I think it depends on the type of vehicle he would like to purchase. He also tends to use state contracts when purchasing. So it depends on what, what vendor is part of the state contract.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Looks like we need to have a formal motion to approve this financial statement. Is, is my understanding correct, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we approve the financial, fiscal year 20 financial statement as presented by our financial director.
Again.
Okay. We have any questions or comments? The motion is. Yeah, very nice. I just can't get over the level of detail and that you've got it all on the, on, you know, you can verbalize it. I'd have notes all over the place.
Jane, I do, I do have a question. Before the end of the year, do these things usually get modified or is this, is this it?
Our audit is normally done before March the 28th and there are usually a few entries done between now and March the 28th. Never more than 50 to 100,000. It's typically if I receive an invoice in or if I receive a check in, then I need to put into the prior period. And, and I do occasionally make a few more adjusting entries, but they're all included and done before the audit. And once the audit is done, no changes are made at all.
Thank you.
All right. The, the motion on the floor is to approve the fiscal year 20 financial statement as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All righty. Thank you so much, Michelle.
Great job, Michelle. Thank you.
Very good.
All right. Let's see. I think I saw Ms. Franklin and we're ahead of time, but it looks like she's ready.
Yes, we am.
All right. Well, the floor is yours.
Okay. I appreciate your time this evening. You've received my request. As I've mentioned in the past, the day report centers remained open and operational with no disruption in service during the pandemic when the start of the closures happened in March. Currently, as we all know, the COVID-19 has impacted access to care in Jefferson County for a lot of folks. The staff here have worked hard to ensure that no disruption in services have occurred. However, the number of referrals received through the court system in the community have rapidly increased. As you will see, I have many attachments along with my proposal, along with a letter from Judge Hammer to support this data. I would like to briefly touch on each of the charts I've submitted. The first one is the referrals from March to September. As you will see, we had a total of 259 referrals total for that time period alone. And 84 of those 259 were from the month of September alone. So that is a huge increase in one month for us, for our staff, our psychologists, but mainly our case management staff. On the next sheet I have is labeled interventions and it is from again, March to September. Interventions mean a wide variety of things. In that amount of time from March to September, this center had 5,550 interventions. Over 3,600 of those were case management. So that's just a case manager connecting with the clients, making sure they're doing okay, making sure they're attending appointments, drug screening, things of that nature. 699 of those appointments were individual therapies with doctoral level psychologists. And 44 of those appointments were medical related, either with a medical doctor or our psychiatrist services as well. So that's all lumped into medical. And of that, 1178 were specifically urine tests. I'll go on to substance abuse screens after the urine test there. During that timeframe from March to September, the case managers here conducted 1,504 drug screens. So that shows you even during the pandemic and the COVID restrictions, the day report center provided extra sanitation with zero disruption in services. We provided proper PPE to the clients and it also increased sanitation by case managers and things like that. Of course, we offer urine tests, wet patches, blood tests, and saliva tests. So that, that is a large number of screens considering most places were closed during COVID for testing. And then the last chart I have to provide you is our virtual DUI program. And as I've mentioned in the past, our virtual DUI program is the only one in the entire state. We actually developed that here. One of the case managers developed that for the DMV. And currently from April to September, we have serviced 78 Jefferson County residents in the DUI program. So it's aided them in getting their driver's license back. You'll see level one, level two, and level three on here. That's the current numbers that we have in each level that is required by the West Virginia DMV. Lastly, you will see a letter of support from Judge Hammer where he mentions the utilization of telebehavioral health services as being invaluable during the pandemic because a lot of services have a great delay. Even now, clients are waiting six months to a year to get enrolled in with a psychiatrist or psychologist. And, you know, again, our case management demands are greater. We're checking in with clients more often. You know, as you've heard, the overdoses have been up. Luckily, our program has not experienced that. We haven't had anyone enrolled in treatment overdose. So a lot of that is attributed to our case managers in how well they're doing with their clients. The clients trust them. They check in with them. Our no-shows are completely down because, you know, they don't necessarily need to come into the office. We do it by telehealth. We do it by video. So all that's increased. You know, I guess the thing is I'm asking for $50,000. That includes salary, but that also includes benefits that we would provide. As you know, we don't receive any funding for county benefits per se. While I'm grateful for the support that we currently receive by the commission, I would like to continue these high level of services for our community, for the residents. And another thing I'll mention is. And another thing I'll mention is through this COVID pandemic, you know, a lot of people think day report as substance abuse only. It is not. You know, we have clients through the pandemic, we have 18-year-olds referred here, 70s, and there's even someone in their 80s that's been referred here from mental health services during this pandemic. So it's invaluable, you know, I feel like this is a small request considering the large return from our community that we're going to see.
Oh, thank you for your information. What would be helpful for me is to know, I mean, you say the numbers are increasing and I absolutely believe you, but I don't know what your numbers were for last year. And my point is, I think if we had that information, then this might be reimbursable through the CARES Act if that's, and Stephanie or Michelle may know more about that and how we could tie that and maybe get it reimbursed.
And I can actually give you those numbers. I have those numbers. One year ago in September, our count was at 83. This year, September, we have 188.
Okay, yeah. All right. Well, Stephanie and Michelle, what do you think of my line of thinking? If we choose to fund this, the $50,000, do you think we could attributed that and get reimbursed for it to COVID?
I actually reached out to our CARES Act coordinator just because I thought the same thing, that maybe this would be something that we could submit to them. There are a couple of things that she had told me. One would be that she believes that there are grants available for, from the CARES Act funding through DHHR and she recommended that they submit their requests for funding to them. However, if we choose to fund it, the funding, of course, runs out 12/31 and we would only be able to submit it on a reimbursement basis, meaning that as this new person is paid, we would have to submit a copy of their pay stub to prove that we actually paid that amount to that employer or that the agency paid that amount to the employee. So it would be on a reimbursement basis only and that, of course, runs out 12/31. So my would be, have you submitted a request to DHHR yet? And then the other part would be, if you choose to fund it and we submitted it through the CARES Act, we would definitely run out of funding on 12/31 and we would probably need to also have an alternate funding source, whether it be the coal severance fund or a one use of fund balance. So that's the information that I have relating to it.
Okay. Ms. Franklin, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ralph.
No, I was just going to ask if anybody knows what a turnaround time for receiving one of those grants would be. I mean, if it's going to be three months to get it turned around, it's not going to help.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I've never, I've never applied for a DHHR grant, so I'm not sure.
Yes, if I may speak on that. So of course, as you know, the county only offers a cash match for our funding here and we do rely on other grants. So we are actively going after grants, you know, to support our staff here. And unfortunately, you know, I don't have any grants right now that are available for additional case managers. We were and will obtain other funding, but not for a case manager at this point. However, you know, if that's something that you all would choose to fund right now, I could certainly look for other opportunities in the future to continue that. But this is something that's needed now. It's not something that, you know, I would be able to wait on long term. A lot of those grants take quite some time to turn around. But I would certainly continue to look for opportunities of funding to further fund this position.
Okay.
Well, and I think that the amount of funding that we provide to the day report center is 150,000. Isn't that what we, the level of funding that we provide? That's what I thought. So I, I don't know. Michelle, what do you think?
Yeah.
Where'd she go?
We haven't hired any positions for any other departments, though. If we hire a position here, we have to let other departments start hiring.
Well, we've allowed public safety departments to hire and I feel like this is more of a community need. It's not necessarily public safety, but it is definitely a community need. I think it would be along the lines of us allowing our public safety positions to be filled because she has seen that much of an increase from 83 to 188 in the, just a one-year span. And as far as funding goes, if we choose to approve it, I think that we could submit part of it for reimbursement from the CARES Act. But after 12/31, we would definitely need to fund it through our alternate source here at the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely see the need. I think it, I mean, you know, the numbers speak for themselves and there's definitely a need. I just, you know, I have some concerns about just the money, you know, at this point. But if we can get at least a portion of that reimbursed, it makes it a little more palatable for me. And I don't, palatable is not a good choice of words because I understand that there is a huge need, but so.
If I may add one other thing, you know, I think another thing to take into consideration here is also, as the judge had mentioned in his letter, the Eastern Regional Jail and the jail bill, by making those referrals here, it not only, you know, helps with the COVID restrictions that the jail has, but it's also jail bills that are being funded. And this is a much more reasonable amount than a long-term, six-month to a year jail bill for some of these clients, that they're not going to be rehabilitated after studying at Eastern Regional Jail. They're not going to receive that treatment where they can hear they're going to receive that.
Well, I see the need is great and, you know, it's not that we don't see the need. It's just that, you know, we're all worried about our budget, even though the budget figure sounded pretty good. It's just, as you know, in the future, it's, with the COVID situation, it looks like a black hole and we're not sure where we will end up.
Well, and I also have to wonder, you know, about future years, you know, at what point, you know, where's, the numbers are increasing. And so, so I'm concerned for the future as well, you know, not just this year's budget.
Right.
Your budget.
I was going to say, I would feel more secure if Congress and the president and Mr. Mnuchin or whatever his, we're just dancing right now. If we had some idea that the next bill is more certain, I think I'd feel more comfortable doing it. But right now, I'm not sure. Come December 31st, we may be looking at an empty bucket.
This is Josh. I echo my colleague's statements on this. The day report center does a great job and I can see your numbers are increasing. Unfortunately, I have concerns as well.
So I just wanted to say, we haven't revisited, you know, right now, we're telling, we're not letting anyone hire except for, but for public safety. However, the assumption for most people is that restriction would be listed, would be lifted January 1st, depending upon what our financial position is, and this hiring would line up with that timeframe. And I think every year, you know, we would have to evaluate what our, you know, in recurring years, this will be part of their, their budget request to the county commission. And it will be reevaluated at that time, depending upon what level the county commission wanted to fund. We haven't, so just to be clear, we haven't looked at that, that hiring freeze yet for everyone else. And I think we're going to look at that probably in December because we told people they had to wait six months to hire and also leave positions open. But I feel like approving this now would line up a little bit, you know, pretty closely with that, that January, December, January date. So.
Well, I, I share everyone's concern about our budget. But in, in the long run, I think it's money well spent and will save us money on jail bills and police resources and so forth. So I'm going to make the motion that we, and I assume we have it in the coal severance fund, we have 50,000. Can we do that or we can't do that for salaries, can we?
You can use a portion of it for salaries, but you can't do the whole thing and it's a percentage. So I don't know how much we have in coal severance, but we may not be able to take.
Fund balance, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
This would be more like a contribution and not necessarily paying the salaries directly. So I, I mean, I'd have to double check that.
Yeah, I think you're right about that, Michelle, because we're not paying the salary directly.
Well, can we then put this on our next agenda after research into the, what our balance is in the coal severance? And what, you know, if this is seen as a contribution or as a salary? And maybe we might have a better idea on possible more federal funding for reimbursement, so.
The balance in coal severance is about $200,000. I would like to get additional confirmation on whether this would be considered salary or contribution, but I feel 99% sure that it would be a contribution and not salaries.
Okay. Well, here, I'll go, okay, well, I, then I will go ahead and make a motion conditional that this 50,000 from coal severance is allowable as a contribution to help fund the needs at the Jefferson Day Report Center. Is there a second?
I'll second it just, just for discussion purposes, although we've already discussed it. And I just, I just, I just have reservations really. I really have reservations about, about future budgets. I mean, it sort of, it sort of puts us in the situation where now, you know, our contribution is going to increase to 200,000 every year. And, you know, because I can't imagine that, you know, this is a temporary position. I just, you know, I wish I could say yes because I wish, I really feel like this is something that's really important. But I, I don't want to commit to something that we're not going to be able to continue to fulfill in the future. So that's where I am. I wish, I wish it were different, but, you know.
Well, I didn't hear a second, so to.
I did say, I did second it.
Oh, yeah, you're right, for discussion purposes. You're right. All right. Any more comments?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, Mike, I expressed my concern about the, the next act out of Congress and I feel more comfortable if that was passed and I agree to, I would prefer to put it off to the next meeting, but that's my view.
Okay. Anyone else?
Nothing here.
Okay. Commissioner Hudson?
No, I think we've all had discussions already.
Okay. So the motion before us is to provide $50,000 to the Jefferson Day Report Center, conditioned upon it being allowed to come from coal severance as a contribution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, motion fails. One to four. Well, thank you for bringing this before us, Ms. Franklin. Is there anything else you want to share with us?
No, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Commissioner, I would ask that it be put on the November 5th meeting just for, if the legislature has passed, maybe for reconsideration at that time.
Yeah, good idea. Yeah, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. We're still running ahead, but is Ms. Fields online or no?
I, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, loud and clear.
Yes, I'm here.
All righty, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm here from the probate office to present a list of estates that have met all the qualifications for probate and just need your approval to be closed.
Okay.
Do we have to convene as a board of review? Not the board of review, not yet. Well, I'll move that we convene as a fiduciary review board. How about that one?
It's, okay, it's been moved and seconded to convene as a fiduciary review board. Thank you, Patsy, for catching that one. Okay, Ms. Fields, usually, we, you know, well, before. Yeah, I have a question though. That with Ms. Fields is that usually we actually handle the papers, you know. And now is that a requirement or is, you know, will they?
It is not. It is not. I verified that the, the last time that we had to do it. And it is not a requirement of code that you actually look at them. You just have to approve the list. And all of the estates and the names on the estates have been provided, so.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Nope, that was a good question. That was a question that I had myself.
Okay, all right. All right.
Well, I did review the, I did review the accounts and I'll move that we approve the closing of the estates opened since the last quarterly review.
Second.
And approval of accounts and waivers too? Is that all part of the scheme? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. The motion before us is to approve estates and approval of accounts and waivers as presented by the probate office. All those in.
Be a board?
What?
Did we ever vote to be a fiduciary review board?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Ms. Fields.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Okay. Now, before we move on to our next item, I'm going to make the motion that we reconvene as into regular session.
Second.
Okay. Motion before us is to return to regular session. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Mr. Jarvis, I see you. The floor is yours.
Hello, Commissioner, how are you?
We're fine.
Good. Thank you for allowing us to come before you. We're needing to request a, excuse me, we're needing to request a extension on the audit for the JCDA. We've had, we've been affected negatively about the COVID pandemic in getting RFPs in. We had, we had to do an extension with deadline for RFPs. We've had two submitted thus far. That will sunset tomorrow at close of business. But we're asking for allowing us to have an extension through the 31st, the end of the year, 12/31/20. We feel confident we will be able to get the audit done. We have, as I told you, we've had two firms submit the proper paperwork and a third sent us marking material and we sent back to them if they wanted to respond that they had by close of business tomorrow.
Yes. Now, it's, is this, I assume Stephanie or Nathan, we're allowed to do that? I mean, we can extend the completion date?
They would need to submit it to the state auditor's office. I believe they're just asking for permission from us to, to get that approval from the state auditor's office.
Okay.
Our financial statements are due by March the 28th, so as long as they're finished before March the 28th, it should not negatively impact us. I will say that last fiscal year, one of our committee units was not able to get theirs finished by June 30th. It was because of the COVID pandemic and they actually just finished their fiscal year 19 financials last, in the last month. So everybody impacted by it.
Yeah, well, and I know it's sometimes very hard to get auditor bids, so such a cumbersome process. So I'll move that we extend, approve extending the JCDA 2020 audit completion. I'll move that we extend, approve extending the JCDAs 2020 audit completion date to December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Have any more questions or discussion?
Appreciate it. I'm sorry.
We haven't voted yet.
I'm sorry. My fault.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All righty.
Thanks for, thank you for your time, Commissioners.
All right, thank you.
I just want to make sure that you had, did you contact the auditor's office already before you came to us?
No, ma'am. We were waiting for you. We waited for you all. We will do that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Make sure. All right, thank you. That's all. Be well.
All right. Um. Nathan's on, Agenda Item Number Six is supposed to start at eight o'clock, and we usually put Nathan at the end. So I'm, we've got a few other items to take care of, so if you're hanging out, Nathan, just hang out a little while longer. I was going to move to Agenda Item Number Seven under New Business, Amendments, Updates to the Jefferson County Recycling Ordinance, and let's see. Josh, did you put that on there?
It says JT, so maybe JT.
Well, that's what I was looking at, and I know I didn't do it.
I think, I, I think it was, Josh, I think it was in here.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'll take it for you, Jane. Don't worry.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Okay, so we briefly spoke about this, I think, back in May 2020. So as everybody knows, I'm the county liaison to the Solid Waste Authority Board. Certain county residents have brought this issue up as well, and I'm all for free market and competition. The problem is, is mainly we have Apple Valley Waste, which provides recycling, and county residents that utilize them pay for recycling also as part of their bill. We now have a new trash service called Panhandle Dumpsters. I'm sure you've seen them, they're, the yellow bins all over Charlestown. You can't miss them. The issue is, they sent us a letter, and I think the letter is still attached from their attorney to the agenda, saying that they were still in the process of getting recycling put forth as part of their service. I don't think they have gotten it in place yet. I actually called them as a prospective customer, and they do not offer it yet. So the problem is, is we have an ordinance that says you have to offer recycling. They are not doing it. And at this point in time, I'm going to revert to Stephanie and Nathan as to how we're going to fix that problem.
Yeah.
So I had some concerns because our, the, the enabling legislation has changed. However, when I looked at that today, I had, I thought it was a problem, and now I don't really think it's a problem, because even though our ordinance was adopted under the prior legislation, I think it meets all of the requirements of the updated legislation. How it's enforced is a different, a different animal, and I don't know if Nathan has any, has any suggestions about how we would enforce that or not.
Yeah, I, I have been looking at that. And it is, I'm still kind of comparing our, our current ordinance with, which was founded on a statute that has since been replaced, repealed and replaced. But I, I am leaning toward agreeing with Stephanie that our ordinance touches on the requirements of the new statute, so. You know, I think that we could probably proceed with the ordinance that we have. I do think that our, the ordinance that we have needs to be updated, definitely. But there are requirements that it has to be put forth. A new ordinance has to be put forth, like in an election, in a referendum kind of thing. And so that obviously can't happen in the very near future. So that's kind of where I am on it. You know, I'm still trying to review it, and I think that, you know, we do have to compare the enforcement sections of our ordinance with, with the new statute to make sure that we are still on, on solid ground.
Nathan, I guess my, my question would be, what stops Apple Valley Waste from just refusing to pick up recycling and taking that charge off their bill?
Well, I think there, I think there may be some other, I think there may be some other things in, you know, they're, they're regulated as well. So I think there may be some other things that would affect them, though I, you know, I'm still, like I said, I'm still reviewing that.
Yeah, just, I, I mean, just speaking on behalf of the Solid Waste Authority Board, this has been a strong concern for these board members for quite some time, and county residents have attended these board meetings raising this concern. I, I'd like to see if we can get to some sort of end game on this issue sooner than later. It's been hanging around for a while. I know that Panhandle Dumpsters does not put their trash in West Virginia. They take it all out of state. That has something to do with how they're regulated also versus Apple Valley.
Yeah, that's right.
So I don't know if that's coming into play as well. Just, I know that the Solid Waste Authority Board has some strong concerns as more people start getting this service and not recycling, just throwing it all in the trash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I would say that, you know, there's been a variety of other issues this year that have, that have sidetracked us from doing some of the things that we normally would do. And unfortunately, we had put off us doing so many things except trying to, trying to get through the early stages of the pandemic, that it has left us kind of, kind of jammed up in doing, you know, now we're doing the things that we would, that we would have done for the first three or four months of this year. And we're, we're just working through it. So I'm, I'm sorry, but it just has taken us a little bit of time to get caught up on a variety of issues.
I didn't mean to imply that you weren't looking into it, and I made it quite clear to the Solid Waste Authority Board and those county residents that because of COVID and other mitigating issues that were time sensitive, that's why it's been slightly delayed. So I'm saying, over the next course of months, if we could try to get some sort of handle on this, and I know you guys are super busy, and I'm not faulting you at all. There are more pressing issues than recycling, even though recycling is very important. Just I want to be able to say, hey, we're looking at it, hopefully have some sort of plan in the next few months.
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Josh, while we're talking about, while we're talking about that, yeah, I've been out on the campaign trail, and I've been asked a few times, does the Solid Waste Authority have a place for glass recycling? And, because I, they've heard there is, but I didn't have a real answer for him.
Well, Commissioner Lorenzetti, I'm happy to report that any county resident can come to the transfer station and recycle all their glass for free. It's in a big dumpster right before the scale on the left side.
Okay.
Then the next question I had was, is it really recycled? But you can answer that.
Yes, it 100% is really recycled, and the Solid Waste Authority is taking that money out of their margins to pay for it and sending it up to recycling.
All right. Well, thank you, Josh. You got me two votes now.
Got it. I'm joking.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's good news about the glass recycling, and I'm appreciative of Solid Waste Authority taking on that additional cost. Yeah, with, between these two waste haulers, I was surprised, because laws must have changed, because I thought they were, you know, awarded or given a territory where they could operate, and they're basically, you know, the only one. But now we have a competition that's not competing at the same level, so I look forward to us trying to figure out how to get it resolved.
One point, Commissioner Tab, real quick to that. So it seems like the, the Apple Valley owns one of the recycling plants in Hagerstown, and they are not allowing that new competitor to use that plant, forcing them to have to take it to Baltimore. And I think that's a big driver of why they're not recycling like they said they were going to.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I read that in some of the, the information, so. Yeah. Okay. So we, we done with this topic? We just look forward to hear more in the future? How to resolve it? There's no objections? I will go to, oh, no, not county administrator reports. We need to hear from Mr. Cochran.
Oh. Did you want to do my reports before his, in case we need an executive session?
Oh, okay. You want to do that, Stephanie? That's fine. Okay.
So the first thing that's listed on my report is the pandemic, the $100,000 block grants, and just to refresh your memory, this is money that Governor Justice gave to counties to distribute to municipalities and other entities who would need funding due to COVID-19. I had reached out to the governor, one of the governor's representatives, to see if some of the applications that we received would be COVID eligible. I did not directly hear back from them, however, the Association of Cal, or the CCAWV had posed this question to them as well, and the governor's representative did respond to them, and since I am on their listserv, I was able to get that information. And they did indicate that you could use it for homeless programs and food bank programs, et cetera, like the two that we have pending, one from Shepherdstown Shares, which is more for a food bank, and one from Community Ministries, which is to help with the homeless issue. And they said, she indicated that she would like it to be tied to COVID-19, which I believe both of these applications did. However, they, these entities have not expended any funds, so it would be a little bit like the Jefferson County Council on Aging. We would tell them that we would fund the project, but they would have to submit receipts to us before they would be reimbursed. So I do think that those two, those two applications are eligible for funding through COVID-19, or through the, the block grant that we received from the governor, and so if you were inclined to approve those, we could do that tonight, and I could let them know that if they wanted to go forward with those projects, they could and submit the receipts to us, and they would be reimbursed if they submitted the receipts. The other one that we had the last meeting were the masks from the Jefferson High School marching band. Sandy did reach out to Mr. Lynch, who was the band director, to ask why the Board of Education did not pay for those. He indicated that the board did buy some masks, but that the Band Boosters, which is the independent fundraising organization of the band, so it's not a school organization. It's the fundraising arm of the marching band. They are the ones who purchased the masks that match the uniforms. And I know that the school board, I can tell you as a former band member, the school board doesn't buy the uniforms either. You have to fund it. The band has to fundraise to buy those uniforms. So I think it's something ordinarily, since they go with the uniform and the polos that they bought, the Board of Education did not fund those, and they used Band Booster money to buy them. And they did that, and they, it was masks and also horn covers to cover all of the horns to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So that is the additional information that I've received from Mr. Lynch at the band office.
So you feel the masks and the bell covers would, would be covered under this block grant, but not necessarily the polos?
I don't, I don't think the polos would be. The polos were for staff.
Okay, yeah.
I have long said I'm not going to include the polos, or I'm not recommending that you include the polos, so we already took that out.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But the masks and the bell covers are to prevent the spread of COVID-19. It's kind of like a form of PPE for band students. The masks definitely, and the bell covers, I've seen different pictures of musicians, and they're all using those bell covers to prevent like the air from coming out of the horn and spreading through the air. So I'll drop it. So I do think that they are, it is related to COVID-19, and it is personal protection.
I have no problem with approving all three of these, however, let me ask you, Stephanie, should we approach Washin High? Because there's our children too.
Sure, I can let that, I mean, he contacted us about it, but I can certainly ask him if they have anything like that, that their Band Booster organization purchased. I'd be happy to reach out to him. I think Mr. Showen, is he still the band director there?
I, I don't know.
I think so, yes.
I'll reach out and see if he's had any. We still have some money left. If we, if we find all of these that are on our list, you know, that's 82, 897,000, so we still have a little under 20,000 left, 70,000 almost. So I'll be happy to reach out to him and see if there are any expenses like that.
Um, just one thing, and I think you did clarify it. I just want to make sure between the Jefferson County Community Ministries, which you said basically is functioning to assist the homeless, and Shepherdstown Shares is a food bank.
Yes.
But I know.
And they're working together.
They're working together, so that's what I just want to make sure we're not. There's no double dipping.
They're different requests. Community Ministries is more related to just like housing, finding housing for the homeless population with increasing you to COVID-19, and Shepherdstown Shares is trying to get up a food bank to, to feed people. So they're, they're different requests. They're totally.
Okay.
Even though they're working together, they are different requests.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that.
And I had one more question. You're, you're saying this is to be reimbursed, and that's fine, but do we need a cutoff date? That we don't drag this on forever?
We do have to have a cutoff date, which would be, because we have to spend them by December 31st, 2020.
Okay.
Okay.
So that is our, if it doesn't, if the governor doesn't extend it, which if the CARES Act stuff isn't extended, then I doubt that he would extend this $100,000 grant. We, it would be December 31st, 2020, and I will let them know that when I contact them to say, hey, you need to, you need, you know, you need to buy it now.
All right.
Right, yeah.
And I have a question about, about these grants too. So obviously, we would have to have receipts, because they have to be submitted. And so I just want, you know, they have to realize that they're going to have to provide us with receipts for the funding if we provide it to them, so I just, you know, I, I wasn't sure if we were going to give them the money, because I thought that we were, we'd have to have, have to show them.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not comfortable giving them, the other, the other ones that we actually provided, they had already purchased the equipment. For anyone who did not, and that includes the Council on Aging, if they had not yet purchased anything, we told them they were approved, but they would not get any funding until they had actually incurred the expense, because I'm not comfortable giving the money without knowing how it was spent and having the receipts for that, because again, we are on the hook for the money, not the entity that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to be.
It's all contingent upon them expending it and giving us receipts.
All right, well, I'll, I'll move it. I'll make the motion that we, that we provide the 20,000 to Community Ministries, 25,000 for Shepherdstown Shares, and the $3,994.80 to the Jefferson High Band Boosters for the masks and bell covers.
Patsy, I think she took out the polos and took $500 out or something like.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought that was, oh, right, the 374480. Yes, okay, I'll amend my motion to that, to that 374480 for the, for the masks and the bell covers without the polos.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or more questions? All those in favor of the motion to, through the COVID-19 pandemic block grant to fund, reimburse Jefferson County Community Ministries 20,000, Shepherdstown Shares 25,000, and the Jefferson High School Band Boosters 3,744.80. Shepherdstown Shares 25,000, and the Jefferson High School Band Boosters 3,744.80. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alrighty, is there anything else? Sorry.
Sorry, um, these are just kind of updates, and just kind of getting your opinion on, on some issues. The first one I have is that I spoke with Nikki Painter earlier, the deputy clerk in the clerk of the county commission's office, and she had been presented with an idea of taking early voters in the side door to separate them from people who are doing regular county business, and to prevent people from kind of crisscrossing, so it would better socially distance people who are coming in to early vote. And it sounds, they're going to put a bailiff out to direct people around to the side door, and we'll put some signage up. And I said if we ended up deciding to do that, we would put it on the clerk of the county commission's Facebook page, our Facebook page, on our web alerts. The downside is that we didn't want people to think that we were trying to confuse them by changing the entrance to early voting. To say, oh, well, they don't want us to vote because they're going to go around to that side door instead of going into the front door, so I told Ms. Painter that I would talk to you guys about it and see what your thoughts were. I do think that we can justify doing this, and I think that we can take steps to ensure that people understand. We'll put signage out to say, you know, early voting go here, early voters go this way, there'll be a bailiff there, and the bailiff is actually, he's just going to try to catch them before they even go to that front door and direct them around to the, to the side entrance. But I wondered if you all had thoughts on that, if you don't, you know, we certainly, our intent is not to keep people from early voting, we want everyone who wants to vote, to early vote, to be able to vote, we're just trying to do it, trying to provide social distancing. The other thing is that I think we'll have a heavy turnout for early voting, as does Nikki, and it'll be able to wrap that line around, especially since it has to be spaced out for six feet. It could go all the way up the sidewalk, so if it's at that side door, it'll be able to wrap around a little bit. So I think we can justify why we're doing it, but I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't an objection from the commission. We can certainly still process them for the front door if you want to, that was just a suggestion from the bailiff, and Nikki and I kind of liked it because it provides, you know, it keeps people safe who are voting, and provides more social distancing. But if you prefer us to keep them through the front door, we'll do that too.
Stephanie, are you talking about the, the side door on George Street, or the side door, the, the other door that's on, there are two doors at the front there, there's a main door, and then there's an, isn't there another door that? I'm not sure which door you're talking about.
I thought she was talking about the side door on George Street, that's the one that I assumed it was, so, and for handicapped voters, they would not be able to go in that way, but we put them to the front of the line anyway.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's what my concern was, so I was wondering if it would be easier to send them through the front door and have them exit through the side door. And that way they won't have to come back through the hallway. They'll be able to go out, I mean, I don't know, I mean, logistically, it, I don't know what makes the most sense, but that was just a thought I had.
Yeah. Yeah, I can see your point, yeah.
Yeah, my concern was sort of what you mentioned there about the steps. A lot of voters are my age or above, and even if they're not handicapped, they have how many steps you have.
Anyone who has trouble standing, or who is older, we move them to the front of the line. So if there's a voter who, you know, can't stand in line, they always move them to the front no matter what, so they would go in that front door no matter what.
I, I have no problem as long as it's what, if it's fairly well labeled that they can do that.
Okay, well, I'll talk about also what, what you said, Commissioner Nolan, to see if that would work, you know.
It will have to come, I mean, well, okay, yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter to me which way, just, I'm just trying to, just trying to eliminate confusion and, you know, see if that's another option, just to, and it doesn't matter to me which way it goes.
Okay.
Right, well, I do think it's a good idea maybe, if they can do it. I, I think maintenance can make a temporary ramp out of that George Street entrance, that can be an exit. You know, I, I think they're capable of doing that, and that would be the, that would help everyone. Whether you're coming in that way or going out that way, but I, I think it sure makes sense to exit on that side. It gets so jammed up if, you know, somebody comes in and needs to see the assessor, or go up into a courtroom for some reason, and you've got early voting going on, we just can't jam people in the hallway like has been done in the past.
Yeah, I think it would make.
Six people in the hallway, she said to me.
Yeah.
I think it made more sense to exit on George Street, because I think people naturally will just want to come through the front of the courthouse.
Right.
And send them out the back and keep them moving, but I.
All right, I will reach out to Nikki, and we'll talk about what the options are.
I was just going to ask if Commissioner Compton or Hudson have any thoughts?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that as long as it's accessible, and they're pulling people out of line, so it's, it sounds fine to me.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as everything is signed well, that's all I care about.
Yeah. Okay, alright.
And then the last thing I have is that Parks and Rec is applying for a building permit at Sam Michaels to put up an additional pavilion. They're doing this to provide additional outdoor classroom space, which they need because they are limited as to the number of children due to the pandemic that they, or the number of any participants they can have inside. We believe this would be eligible for CARES funding, so they're hoping to pay for it by, through CARES funding. However, they need you to sign the building permit because the county commission actually owns the property at Sam Michaels, it's not in the Parks and Rec Commission's name. It's not on the agenda, and I'm not sure, we're not actually sure how soon they need it, I know that she's ordered the pavilion, but it won't be in for another eight weeks, I think she told me, but if she has to get it approved also, so she has to get the building permit approved from planning, zoning, and engineering. I think they'll be able to have the turnaround time if we put it on the next agenda, which I would put it on the next agenda for official action. But I wanted to know if in the meantime, if Jane had to sign it because we needed it done more quickly than what the next meeting, then would be permitted by the next meeting, if anyone had any objection to her signing that building permit?
Yeah. I think we, you know, we have to be pretty flexible right now, and do it, try to do everything the correct manner, but these are extraordinary times, and I can see where they're, their need.
Right, and I, I think we'll be fine by doing it the 29th, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. But I'm pretty sure we'll be able to put on the 29th, but if we need it ahead of time, I just wanted to make sure that no one was objecting to, to our signing that, or to you, to you signing it. Yes, Commissioner Lawrence, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's all right, you may have done this, did you give us an estimate on the cost? Just in general terms.
And they are paying for it on their budget, but I think it's, it's under 25,000, it seems like 24,000.
Hey Stephanie, I have something quick before you end, can you provide an update as far as Will Roarball reviewing that Article 147 thing we approved last meeting?
Yes, I can, actually, he gave us the letter, oh, okay, well Nathan's going to do it, you can do it.
Okay, uh, yeah, just as an update, we'll put that on the agenda for the, for the next meeting. I've had a couple of fairly lengthy discussions with him, and he's looking, he's looked into it, he's given us sort of a, of a draft, but I, perhaps a communication that we may be able to send to Charlestown, but I wanted to just get that finalized, and we'll get that on the agenda next time, and we'll have him speak to you.
Alright, thanks a lot, guys.
Okay. Alright, Stephanie, do you have anything else for us?
I think I've finished.
Okay. Shall we move to Agenda Item Number Six, and Mr. Cochran's list of all the things he's involved in right now, yes?
Okay, the, the first item that I would like to discuss would be the third item down on the list, which is Jefferson County Circuit Court Civil Action 19P69. This particular civil action involves David Tab against the county commission regarding a couple of issues. As you know, there had been an order issued by Judge Sanders, and ultimately approved by the Supreme Court that limited Mr. Tab's, I don't guess I would say limited, it, it basically said that Mr. Tab, to file a matter before the court, would need to either get approval from the court or have an attorney. Mr. Tab did hire an attorney, and in that particular case. And then the attorney has now moved to withdraw, and so the court granted that motion to withdraw, but noted that because of the other orders that Mr. Tab could not proceed pro se, and so the court stayed the action for 30 days to allow Mr. Tab time to retain counsel. So that's where we are, I'm just giving you a report on that. I don't think it needs any significant discussion, at this point, we're just waiting on a new counsel. Regarding the next item below that, West Virginia Supreme Court Number 19-0412, that is our annexation suit with Charlestown. I will report on that here in public session, but I may need to discuss a couple of issues with you about that in executive session. But anyway, just as a matter of a report, we appeared before the Supreme Court along with counsel for the city of Charlestown. We, I suppose you would say we made a real argument on this issue. Here's the problem with this case, during the time, between the time that that all this, the events in this case happened before the county commission, and I won't take time to rehash all of them, but just in some, the, the city of Charlestown attempted an annexation of, I believe about 2,600 acres, something like that, and the commission rejected that application for a couple of reasons, one, because they did not believe the city met the threshold requirements for the annexation under the statute, and two, they did not believe that that meant the, the county commission did not view that annexation as minor. So anyway, the city had challenged the commission's rejection of the annexation, and in the intervening time between that and now, the statute changed, and so therefore, when we appeared before the Supreme Court, the question was, that the Supreme Court had to us was, you know, what about the new statute? And because it is a rather complicated question, the Supreme Court, in its decision that it just issued, remanded the case to to the Circuit Court in order for us to fully brief the issue of the ramification of the new statute on the annexation before the Circuit Court, and so that's where we are, I do have a couple of other things I want to discuss with you about that in executive session related to just giving you some legal advice about it. I would also have a very brief report on the issue of the Fire Board, the EMS, and the Jefferson County ESA, which is another couple bullet points down there. But because of various issues related to potential for litigation and liability, I need to do that in executive session. And then the very last item on my list, the Department of Interior Inquiry into the Historic Landmarks Commission's activity, and that docket number there. I will just give you a, I need to discuss that with you a bit in executive session, and so that's all that I have in public session, I would recommend that the commission enter into executive session to receive legal advice regarding a small matter related to the, the Supreme Court Number 19-412, a brief matter regarding the emergency services and fire department issue, and also the Historic Landmarks inquiry by the Department of the Interior.
Obviously, we enter an executive session to receive legal advice on West Virginia Supreme Court Case Number 190412, and and to receive legal advice on the Jefferson County Fire Board Emergency Ambulance Service Board issue, and the Department of Interior Inquiry of Historic Landmarks Commission for Docket Number PCRNPS04-20.
Second.
Alright. The motion before us is go into executive session, receive legal counsel on the three agenda items as outlined in the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we will exit this meeting and go into the executive session meeting, and I need a short break, so I'm sure maybe everybody else is, so we will return.
Stephanie?
Yes.
While we're waiting for the others to get on, I just want to let you know I will be out of town through Tuesday night. So I know there's some things that will need to be signed as soon as I get back.
Okay.
Right. From what we did today, I think the sheriff's thing is on a kind of a tight timeline. So if I don't show up on Wednesday by noon, call me or something to make sure I get in there.
Okay. Yeah, I did see your email today and I was going to reach out to Bob and see which format he thought would be best. Because if we can use it for the meeting and you mentioned that you're going to be out of town in that meeting too.
Yeah, right.
Meeting. Because if we could do it using this format, if we could limit it to, you know, to actually authorize representatives who are, you know, and then, you know, have public comment if we wanted to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, Bob actually brought that, you know, brought after I expressed our concerns and he says the rates are rising in Montgomery County too. So COVID rates, so, yeah. All right, we waiting for Patsy?
We're waiting for Patsy. We have Caleb. Oh, she's here. Never mind.
Yeah, I'm having trouble joining the webinar and
Okay.
was able to join earlier with no problem, but so I'm on the phone.
Okay, so we have it.
Okay, I didn't see anything for Josh and Caleb. Okay.
Yeah, they're here.
All right, all right. So we're all here. We have just completed an executive session with Mr. Cochran. No action needs to be taken. I'll move that we reconvene in regular session.
Second.
The motion is reconvening regular session. All those all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The only little bit of business, and I know it's getting late for some of us. Does anyone have a county commissioner report that they want to share?
Well, it's, I will. I mean, it's been a busy week. I don't have it in front of me because I left my phone downstairs and I'm up in the office. But earlier today, the JCGA is working on the strategic plan. So we had a combined meeting with the strategic plan committee and the executive committee to discuss the final steps for the plan and to review the draft. Earlier this week, I had a council on aging meeting. And I can't remember what else I did, so.
Patsy here with me on the broadband.
Oh, right. The broadband thing. Yeah, we were on the broadband committee yesterday. We had a meeting with that. Thanks, Ralph. Yep. That's all.
Okay. Ralph?
Well, beside the broadband, I went to a planning commission meeting. The usual things, although I think one of the issues will eventually come before the county commission. It's concerning cemeteries, but we'll wait till it comes here.
Yeah, I saw that on the agenda, on the alerts. Yeah. All right, Josh or Caleb?
Yeah, neither of my boards have met yet since last meeting. I already addressed the issues at solid waste authority and we touched on parks and wrecks already.
Okay. Caleb?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Let's see, October 6th, I had attended a fire and rescue meeting. October 8th, farmland protection board easement committee. And October 13th, regular farmland protection board meeting. And we've approved a couple of applications for easements and we'll start working on getting them processed through the approval, which can take some time working with federal agencies. And then also I went with Liz Wheeler to visit a property owner that was interested in applying, getting their property under easement. So it's interesting to talk one-on-one with a property owner that, you know, doesn't always understand how we operate and the limitations and also some of the flexibility with a conservation easement, the type that the farmland protection board holds. They're very different than some other types of easements. So, but it's always good to see that there's still interest in the program. Is there any other business that needs to come before us tonight? Stephanie's yawning, so I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Have a good weekend.
Good night.
Night.